Can I get everyone's attention? I want to welcome all of you here tonight for our 2022 Commissioner Race Forum. I appreciate all of you coming out and I greatly appreciate the candidates that agreed to participate tonight. My name is Sherri Anderson and this forum is put on by the Williamson County Republican Career Women, which I am the president, the Republican Women of Williamson County, which is Debbie Ballard, and then also the Williamson County Republican Party, which is Cheryl Brown. Cheryl's going to open us up with a prayer.
Let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we give you grace and we ask you for your grace and your mercy for each person here. We ask you to keep us and watch over us. We ask you to watch over our country and bless our country, Lord, and heal our land. And we also pray for each candidate here to run this race well. And we ask you to continue to do your work and each and every one of us, in Jesus's name, amen.
And Debbie's going to lead us in the pledge allegiance. I asked the county mayor if he would start us out this afternoon and just kind of briefly give us a summary about what's going on in the county and what some of these contestants know and some of them that may find what they'll be facing. So Rogers, if you'd appreciate it.
Well, again, good evening. I'm Rogers Anderson, the county mayor. Thanks again to the Republican Party and the career women and to Cheryl for giving up another evening and to the people that'll be asking the questions. We thank you very much for doing that. A little bit about Williamson County and the history and some of the issues that these men and women will be facing. First of all, thanks to them for putting their name on a ballot. That's always a scary proposition if you've never done it before, but it is a very noble thing. We need good men and women serving in our community. Williamson County was founded in 1799 and up to the present, we now have 12 districts in our county. That's one person on the school board per the district and the county commission has two people that represent Williamson County. Two people for each one of those districts. So there's 24 county commissioners that will meet in here nine times a year in this county commission room. We're a community of about 250,000 people. We are growing at the rate of 35% per year over the last 10 years. We have 50 schools. We have several under construction and two of them are currently in the process of starting the bidding process to build our schools. And then we have some land that we're looking at to build the 53rd school in the county. I think some of the things that swirl around in our community as we continue to grow and deal with our county, one of the things that we've always focused on or have focused on in the last 20 years is the bond rating that a particular county or city may have in their rating. Just like you and myself, if we go to buy a home or buy a car, you have a credit score. And counties and cities each have a credit score. The best credit score that you can get through Moody's or Standard and Poor's, they're called a triple A rating. This county is one of three that has a triple A rated bond rating so that when we go out in the marketplace to borrow money, just like you would under mortgage, we go out in the market to borrow money. There are people that bid on our money and you want to have the best credit score that you can possibly have so that you can borrow money at the cheapest rate. Our budget this year will be somewhere around, we haven't finished it, we've just started actually the budget processes over the last few weeks, but our total operating budget will be somewhere around three quarters of a billion dollars. 65% of that goes to schools. There is about six and a half percent of that is debt. County commissioners have to pay the debt, the schools don't. And so the remainder of that, about 28%, goes back into funding all of the other activities that we have. Trustee's office, the registered deeds office, the landfill, the sheriff, the court system, everything else has to be funded off of all of that revenue that comes in. If you're looking at how the schools are funded currently, that may change if the legislators change some of the rules. We're currently under the BEP, which is short for Basic Education Program, I think. We just use the term BEP. And that's been around for 25-plus years. We're probably in the second or third rendition, so they're looking at it for funding for schools. We get 45%, 46% from the state. We get about one and a half percent from the feds and the remainder of it comes out of your property taxes and the fees that we charge for people coming into our community. The final thing I would like to say to, this one's directed to the candidates behind me, it's a noble job, it's a noble choice that you have made to make your community the best that it can. We try to work under the constitutional side whereby that we have the judicial side, we have the legislative side, and we have the executive branch. I do not serve on the county commission board. I do not run the meeting that is elected by the county commissioners in their oversight once a year. And so my role as the county mayor from the executive side is present and presenting with the data and recommendations of going forward. So I think that was everything that you kind of wanted me to handle, Sherri, so I don't know who to turn it over to now, but thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Tonight, our moderator will be Richard Davis. He has actually worked, actually was born in Williamson County and some of you may remember that his dad, Joey Davis, was our trustee for several years. And Richard's going to take it over from here.
Well, I'm going to correct something really fast. Sherri, I'm sorry, I was not actually born here. I was born, no, my dad was in the Navy. I was actually born in Rabat, Morocco, in a naval base. So we moved back here as quick as he could get out of the service, though. I was about five, so. I've been here for 53 years myself and first let me say thank you for giving me the honor to come up here and help tonight for the candidates on the other side. I've sat in that seat before where you are doing what you're doing right now. Thank you for stepping up to the plate. It's really, what Roger said, it's really hard to do that. So thank you very much for y'all stepping up to the plate to try to help my community. I appreciate it. Well, let's see. Well, I think I go from here to introducing the panel. And over here, we've got Mr. Tom Lawrence. He's going to be asking some of the questions. He's been with WAKM for a long time and we have, I'm not going to say how long, Tom. And then we've got Coleman Bomar and he represents the Williamson Herald. So they'll be asking the questions. I'm just here to keep it fair and nobody can see no bloodshed tonight. That's all I'm supposed to do. All right, so now we're going to introduce everybody. If I mess up, please don't get too mad. I practice, but you know how that works. So first, we've got Mr. from the District 2. We've got Mr. Drell Floyd. And then we've got Judy Lynch Herbert. We have Betsy Hester. And we have Andy Moriarty. District 5, we have Tommy Little, Robin Baldry, Mary Smith, Rob Varell. District 7 takes us to Tom Tonncliff. We have Christopher S. Richards. And you think I just read the signs in front of him, it'd be so much easier than looking down. We have Mr. Bert Chalafont. And then behind them, we have District 12 and that's Brian Clifford, John Dillon, Steve Smith, and Jennifer Swain. And I thank y'all for being up here tonight. It's a hard thing to do. Thank you very much. Now, I'm going to read you this, the basic rules for this evening. To start out with the audience, please be courteous to all the candidates. Hold your applause to the end of the form and no outbursts or talking while the candidates are speaking, or we have security. All right, for the candidates, all the candidates will have an opportunity for a short, one-minute introduction prior to the question-answer portion. During the question-answer section, each candidate will have one minute to answer questions asked by the panel. These two fine gentlemen over here. Rebutts will not be allowed unless a candidate is mentioned by name by another candidate in their answer. If allowed, rebuttal will only be 60 seconds, I mean 30 seconds, sorry, I told you I'd make a mistake. Each candidate will be given a two-minute closing statement. During the form, candidates will not be allowed to interrupt one another. However, the moderator may need to interrupt if a response exceeds the allotted time. I will have two cards. A white card for a 10-second warning. And then the red card says, that's it, we're at the end. And I have two ladies over here watching me to make sure I hold my cards up correctly. So with that in mind, I will leave y'all with a piece of advice my dad gave me when I ran for office. And that was, when you're in politics, there's one person you can believe and that's the person that looks you square in the face and says, I would never vote for you. Everybody else keep working for their vote. It's the best I can tell you. And good luck to each and every one of them. All right. Oh, I got too many papers and I was supposed to have a few. All right, so we're going to start with the one-minute opening statement and we're going to start with Mr. Drell Floyd. Drell, floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. I'm Drell Floyd. I live in District 2. I'm running for District 2 County Commission. I was born here, raised here, worked here, and still live here. I'm running on, we need to get back to vocational training in our schools. We're losing a lot of auto mechanics, carpenters, cosmetology. We need more, better infrastructure, bridges, roads, and first responders. We need more funding and training. Thank you.
Thank you. You kept me from holding the card up. Thank you. And we will go to Judy Lynch Herbert next.
Hi, I'm Judy Lynch Herbert. I'm currently serving as the Second District County Commissioner. I'm married to Joey Hubbard and I have three children, Nikki, Luke, and Houston. I'm a seventh-generation Williamson Countyan and I'm retired as the program manager for Child Support Services. I am now farming, raising beef cattle and growing hydroponic tomatoes. I've served as a county commissioner for 12 years and as a county commissioner, I enjoy working on the Budget Committee and looking for any unnecessary expenses that can be eliminated. I also spend a lot of time helping my constituents with any questions or problems with county issues and I like protecting the rural areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Judy. And we go to Betsy Hester next.
Thank you, Richard. I'm Betsy Hester and I have served for 16 years as county commissioner in District 2. It's been a delight. I really started working on planning before I was, before I served on the county commission and I voted for the Comprehensive 2040 Plan, which I believe is for responsible growth. I have served on all the committees, on the county commission, including the Budget Committee twice. I've voted for impact fees for education to fund our very expensive schools that we build. I have also worked to get broadband internet for unserved and underserved. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Betsy. And next will be Mr. Andy Moriarty.
Great, thanks, Richard. And a big thanks to our hosts, the GOP Career Women, the GOP Women, and of course, the GOP itself. So my name is Andy Moriarty. I'm running for county commissioner in District 2. My wife of 26 years, Linda and I live in Patensville for just over the last three years. I retired two years ago. I've been the CEO of over five companies, mainly manufacturing, starting 21 years ago. We moved here from Houston, Texas, where I was global president over six manufacturing companies serving the oil and gas industry. Serving on your commission is a public service to me. What I bring to the table is my professional business approach to government and keeping it small. Also, my experience leading companies much larger than our own county government, in excess of $700 million per year and 20,000-plus employees reporting to me.
Thank you, Mr. Andy. And we'll go to Mr. Tommy Little next.
I'd also like to thank the Republican Women and the Career Women and the Republican Party for hosting this. My name's Tommy Little. I'm a lifelong county resident, multi-generational, I don't know how far back. I've been married 43 years, have four kids and six grandkids. Enjoy the county, enjoy serving the county. I have been on the commission, I'm completing my 16th year. I have served on every committee, including chairman of the budget, and now I serve, elected by my peers, for the last four years as chairman of the commission. I think I have a broad understanding of how county government works. We strive to provide services at the lowest possible tax rate and look forward to serving four more years.
Thank you, Mr. Little. And we'll go to Robin Baldry next.
Thank you. And thank you all as well. My name is Robin Baldry. I'm running for county commission in District 5. My family and I have lived in Williamson County for 21 years, 16 of those years in District 5. My husband Matt and I have been married for 31 years and we have three children that we raised in Williamson County schools. My kids were, while my kids were in school, I was a volunteer, worked on athletic booster clubs, and was even a substitute teacher for many years. I am a conservative Christian. I'm an active member at Conduit Church in Franklin, a small business owner for the last almost 16 years here in Williamson County and a public servant. As a public servant, I have served on many committees here in our county and also the Williamson County Planning Commission for the last 14 years, which is an appointed position, not an elected position. I love Williamson County and I love being a part of our community and our schools. Having served on the Planning Commission for the last 14 years, I'm running to ensure that an experienced voice speaks for the communities in District 5.
Thank you. Excuse me. And we'll go to Ms. Mary Smith next.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Debbie, Cheryl, Sherri. Hi, my name is Mary Smith and I am running for District 5 County Commissioner. My husband Wade and I came to Williamson County in 2000. We have three children, all born at Williamson Medical Center and educated in Williamson County schools. Our family attends LifePoint Arrington located in Kings Chapel Community. As a citizen, small business owner, parent, and church member, I've always been actively involved in supporting our schools, local charities, and other local businesses. In 2015, I obtained my MBA in Leadership and Ethics. I currently work at Nissan headquarters in Franklin where I am the Technology Manager of Customer Experience. Since I first started working as a bus girl at the age of 14 to now working for a Fortune 500 company, my focus has always been on building trust and delivering value to the customer. I will continue to commit myself to the same level of service as county commissioner to the hard-working people in District 5. I'm not a political insider or a well-connected politician. I am concerned citizen who's seeking to make a positive difference in the county we all love.
Thank you, Mary. And we'll go to Rob Varell next.
Yes, and thanks to everyone for putting this on. I really appreciate it. I'm Rob Varell and I am a Christian and a husband, a father, and I'm a community volunteer. I'm a liberty-minded conservative and I am the only resident in Knowlesville that is in the Republican Party. is in the Republican primary, and I feel it's important that our town has representation at the county level. I've served on the Knowlesville Planning Commission, I've served on the Knowlesville Economic Development Committee, I have also served on the Executive Committee with Chairman Brown. And the biggest thing I've done is I helped change the charter in Knowlesville, which was a major undertaking, and it was made state history. I want to run on a platform of having low taxes and great schools, and having the amenities that the people of this county deserve and want. And our town has many needs along these lines, and I'd appreciate your vote if you're living District five. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. We're gonna move next to Mr. Tom Tonacleth.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, ladies, for putting this on, I do appreciate it. The question I get when I'm knocking on doors, why did I run? Why do I run? Two reasons. I live in this county, and I've lived here almost twenty years, thirty years in the area. My taxes are low. My children got an amazing education, they're both in college now on scholarships, and my house value goes up every year. Not a bad place to be. I wanted to continue that. Charles Sargent kinda gave me a kick in the pants to do that during leadership Brentwood, and it's been an honor to serve for the last four years. I've served on the Budget Committee this year, asked by Mayor Anderson to do so. I served two years as Education Chair and a year as Vice Chair for Education during COVID. So, also served on many other committees, property, rules, tax study. Concerned about funding the rest of the county in the next four years.
Thank you, Tom. And I forgot to say we're in District seven at this point. Next, we'll have Mr. Christopher Richards.
Hi. My name is Christopher Richards. I've lived in Brentwood for almost twenty years with my wife and three kids. And here's why I'm running. We deserve better than to live in the wealthiest Republican county in the country only to be one billion dollars in debt. The debt has become like a cancer on the county, and the spending being cigarettes. We cannot wait. At the current overspending rate, we will be at two billion in another four years. We deserve better than to have our concerns fall on the deaf ears of complacent commissioners. The poor planning and debt shows itself by Brentwood Middle School languishing for fifteen years to have upgrades approved with no plan to fully fund the construction. It shows itself with portables heading to the back of Brentwood High School. District seven and Brentwood pays the most in total dollars towards the schools, yet we have one of the oldest middle schools. We deserve better.
Thank you, Christopher. Next will be Bert Chalafont.
I'm Bert Chalafont. I've been on the county commission for thirty-plus years. This has been a real joy in my life. I also serve and have served on the Board of Trustees of Williamson Medical Center for over twenty-five years. We have had all types of questions about what do you need to do, how do you need to do it? I think our record shows that we've done pretty well, and we continue to work and make this one of the best counties in the country. Our hospital is five-star rated. You don't find but two or three even in the country. All right. I hadn't just started, out of thirty years, I've just started. Thank you.
Thank you, Bert. Sorry. Next will be Brian Clifford. Talk loud. You're okay.
Brian Clifford, running for District twelve. My wife and kids are here in the audience tonight. I'm running to help protect the job of Williamson County, and I want to help make this the best educated, the most comfortable, and the safest county in the state. And I think we can do that by focusing on three main areas, education, growth and infrastructure, publics. I'm currently a director of our state's parks and conservation, and things like Tennessee State Parks, state natural areas, archaeology. I hope to bring some of my passion for service into the county commission, and hope to follow some of the great leaders that have brought Williamson County to the state, and hopefully add some value to the running for its county commission. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Brian. Sherry, I do notice he had a light on just then, I don't know if there's a short or something up there for his. Oh, it's moving across, I got it, I figure out things slowly. Now, we're gonna go to Mr. John Dillon.
Hello, my name is John Dillon. I'm running for county commissioner in District twelve. I'm originally from Washington, DC. I've lived here for two years now. I left Washington, DC because Williamson County is one of the most beautiful counties in the whole nation. A lot of really great, friendly people, wonderful conservatives. When I lived in Washington, DC, I served as a firefighter, and that's all I was, had a passion for for my whole life, was serving my community. I developed a lot of great systems up in the DC area with my family and my friends and everybody I knew up there. I started a business up there that I brought down here with other local businesses as well, and I currently employ ninety-six people and created a very comprehensive team. We've developed multiple different systems in place, and I want to bring a lot of my experience from education I've had with my bachelor's in Homeland Security Management, also an MBA, and bring that to preserve the conservative values in the community, and most importantly, the divine objective of serving.
I'm sorry, but that's my fault, I was looking down and did not get to raise a white one, I'm sorry. Probably won't be my last mistake either. And now we'll go to Mr. Steve Smith.
Thank you, Richard. I would like to thank Cheryl and Sherry and Debbie for their organization's support of this event. I am Steve Smith. I'm a county commissioner for the twelfth district, and I'm an incumbent running for reelection. I'm Vice Chair of the commission, and I'm also the Budget Chair this year for the county commission.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And we'll go to Ms. Jennifer Swaim next.
Hello, my name's Jennifer Swaim. I'm running for District twelve. I'm a mother of four kids, I'm a paramedic, I'm a nurse. I think I can bring a lot of interesting attributes to this role. I want to really help try to bring more money into the community by getting grants and stuff. And I just look forward to trying to serve the community and get to know everybody.
Thank you, Jennifer. Now, we're gonna go to our questions, and Tom, be gentle. But we're gonna start with you. And Tom, we are gonna start with Mr. Tommy Little.
Mr. Chairman. Are you crazy?
I like think so.
Well, how many... This question is made so every person can answer it. But in all honesty, I've known Tommy Little probably as long as I've known Bert Chalafont. And they make it possible to know them for a long time. You've been on the commission, you've served on the commission as chairman. Can you define the difference? And I would like for each incumbent to answer it this way, and each challenger to answer it this way. Do you know the difference between a county commissioner and a school board member? What is that difference?
The state constitution lays out our roles as commissioners. As county commissioners, we have control over the budget of the school, total dollar amount, and basically, that's it. The rest of the operation of the schools comes under the school board. It is not my job to run schools, it's my job to watch over their budget. And that's what we do. It makes up sixty-six percent of our budget. When you include the debt, it's seventy-five percent. We do a wonderful job with what we do in keeping our tax rates low, but my job as a commissioner is the budget of the schools and not the running of the schools.
Thank you, Tommy. We'll put the same question to Ms. Baldry.
Thank you so much.
Rob. That's okay.
Thank you, Ms. Cheryl. So, yes, so county commissioners, as I understand it, as a new candidate, they are the policymakers, they are the legislative body of the county. They approve or disapprove the school budget. The school boards are their own elective body, and they make, they have their own, I guess what I'm trying to say, they are their own elective body. We don't control them, they make their own decisions, and they run the schools. We, our county commissioners, like I said, they either approve or disapprove their budget. There's no line item vetoes or anything like that at this point, so there's a total difference. We don't, we don't tell them how to do their job, I guess, if you will.
Thank you, Robin. We'll go to Mary Smith next.
Thank you. So, to me, the county commissioner, and you know, this major, this basically the policymakers, and we oversee the budget, but it's very important, the oversight responsibility that we have. So, while the school board is responsible for the running of the schools, I do believe that the county commission has a great opportunity to partner more closely with our schools and to provide some guidance and to provide some insights, and vice versa. With the school budget being such a large portion of our overall budget, I think that we need to work more closely together. I also think there's an opportunity to look at some things as the county commissioners, like charging our out-of-county schoolteachers tuition to bring their kids to school. I think as a county, we should be pro-family. And when you have to send your kids to a different school district than where you work, to me, that's just not pro-family.
Thank you, Mary. Rob?
Sure. So, as Chairman Little mentioned, the county commission is solely responsible for approving or not approving the budget. That is the most important thing that they do, as far as like policy or hiring teachers or superintendents or anything like that, that is strictly under the constitutional purview of the school board. And that should be their, that should be their responsibility, because they are also publicly elected officials. I do think that there can be, there should be a partnership between the school board and the county commission, and we should work with our school board on making our schools as best as they can be. As a commissioner, you should, we should be listening to the school board for their needs and their wants, and what they feel can be a way to make our schools greater even better than they already are.
Thank you, Rob. Tom?
Yeah. Commissioner Little summed it up on the legal aspect of it, absolutely. We approve their budget. And being on Budget Committee this year, I'm learning that we get a good look at the school's budget, and we get to drill down through it. I didn't, I didn't take full advantage of that when I had the chance every year, but this year, I'm definitely looking through it. Talking about getting along or working closer with your school board, I work very closely with the District seven school board member. We meet every other week, talk about things. She tells me what's going on on the school board, I tell her what's going on on the county commissioner, I think many of the commissioners do that currently. So, I learn a lot through the school board that way. But we don't mess with what little, what the children are gonna wear to school. That's not our job, we just want to make sure they're funded correctly and teachers get what they deserve.
Thank you, Tom. We'll go to Christopher next.
Thank you. The county commission's got three jobs. They fund the schools, they fund public safety, and they fund the roads. I consider in priority, the most important, funding public safety, police and fire. The next would be school, next would be roads. I think it's really important that we make sure that we fund things like the Brentwood Middle School. That's, you know, that is part of the county commission's job. It's languished, like I mentioned in my opening statements, languished for fifteen years, and that's something that the county commission has overlooked again and again. And that is the way that we can have an influence over what is done with the schools. I worked and still do, I'm a PTO Board Chair at Brentwood High School, and I sit next to Sheila Cleveland every month, and we talk about the issues. I would like to continue going to those, those board meetings on the PTO after, if I get elected as county commissioner.
Thank you, Christopher. Mr. Bert?
Bearing in mind that education obviously is one of the top points as far as the county is concerned, we've got a lot of other stuff to do, too. Whether it be within the law enforcement, whether it be in the medical area, whether it be in, oh goodness, how many other different areas that we must be concentrated on? And I've served on every one of the committees more than once. Yes, we could do some, some other things. I think one thing that we've, we perhaps have overlooked, and that's when the mayor gave us the information about the triple-A bond rating. And that's something I want to talk about a little bit later when I have some time.
Thank you, Bert. And we're gonna go to Brian Clifford next. I hope they got your microphone fixed.
I think I'm gonna have to share with my neighbor here to finish off the night. I think schools are very important to most folks in this community, but I think we elect school board members to perform certain functions. We don't elect county commissioners to do that same function. I, I think I understand that the county commission is in large part a measure of fiscal accountability for schools, and the fact that we approve the budget and we look at capital expenses. I think some other areas where we have input are the fact that we nominate and replace school board member vacancies, we approve teacher pay increases. So, there's lots of opportunities to work with the school board members, and I think the partnership between our respective members is important. But I think it's also important to allow the school board members to do the work that they are elected to do, and that we each remain in our own areas that the public's elected us to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. We'll go to John Dillon next. We'll give you a second to get set up.
Can you hear me now?
Got you.
So, the difference between county commissioner and school board, county commissioner, majority of what they do is they approve or disapprove different fiscal measures when it comes to things like the school board, or roads, or public service, or infrastructure, or development in the county. But most importantly, what I believe the role of a commissioner should be is to represent the people and constituents of their district as a whole in the legislative body within the commission.
Thank you, John. We'll go to Steve Smith next.
As Tommy pointed out, the school board is the elected policymaking board for the school system, and they, they hire the superintendent, and they direct the management of the schools. There's an awful lot of collaboration with the school system in terms of the budget as we go through the budget process. There's also collaboration with, as Tom said, the school board member in your district. But as a county commission, as an elected body, we're not gonna sit up here and tell another elected body, the school board, what their business is.
Thank you, Steve. We'll go to Ms. Jennifer Swaim next.
Like all the candidates before me have said, you know, the county commissioners are, their main area of expertise is budget, and controlling the budget, which makes the school board be able to work. But like they've said before, we, we need to make sure that we follow and stay in our lane and let them stay in their lane so that they can do what they do, and we stay in our lane and help fund them as best to our ability.
Thank you, Jennifer. We're gonna go back over here to District two, we'll start with Mr. Drell Floyd.
I'm gonna reiterate a lot of things everybody's already said. The county commission's purpose is review and vote on the budget. Also, we set the property tax rate and any other functions that may arise in the county. I would like to see more of a partnership with the school board members for funding. Again, one of the things that I'm strongly pushing for is more vocational training back in the schools, maybe find some funding for that. So, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Drell. And we'll go to Ms. Judy.
Thank you, Richard. Our job as county commission is simple, it's the money. We vote on the budget, how the money's spent. We approve the budget for the school system, but we can't tell them how to spend it. If there's something in there that we're not happy with, we can say, we wish that you would cut this out, and we can cut the budget, but they could cut some other item. We have, we just approve the total amount of the budget, that's all we do, but we cannot tell them what books to read, what days to go to school. We have no power over that. All we can control is the total amount of the budget we approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Judy. And I'm sorry, I keep calling you Ms. Judy.
That's fine. That's fine.
And we'll go next to Betsy Hester.
Thank you. And I'm remiss. Previously, I did not thank Debbie, Cheryl, and Sherry. And I appreciate our panel who took the time to be here tonight and also Ms. Amy. And thank you, Mr. Davis. I want to say that I'm not sure I would qualify to be a school board member. That's really hard work. There's a lot of policy they have to read and know. I'd take my hat off to anyone who is wanting to run for school board. And the Williamson County schools hire the teachers, the principals, cafeteria workers, after-school care, and the capital. They have a big job. We on the county commission do set the budget. We do not have a line item veto on the education budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Betsy. And we're going to go to Andy Moriarty.
You bet. Great. Thanks, Richard. I'll keep this very short. Two very different positions. School board members run the schools, period. They set the policy for that. It's day-to-day, week-to-week, year-to-year. The commission is responsible for the finances. Now, obviously, the school boards need finances to run. So there needs to be a lot of collaboration, a lot of understanding, a lot of questioning, challenging that goes back and forth between those two organizations. But they're distinctly different.
Thank you, sir. And we will go to our next panelist, Mr. Coleman Bomar.
Thank you.
So this first question is about growth. Williamson County is not only appealing to people who wish to move here, but businesses. And with that appeal comes necessary infrastructure improvements. Should those corporations who have moved here be more responsible for making infrastructure improvements within the county? Or is the taxpayer primarily responsible?
We're going to start with Mr. Burke Chalfont.
I think that that's extremely good question. And that's something that we've debated quite some time. There is certainly about a responsibility of the individual businesses. We have had all, well, quite a number of new industry come into this area, but they come in with that understanding that they're going to carry their load. And it's not necessarily what we're, you're addressing here. They have to carry their load.
Thank you, Burke. We're going to go to Christopher Richards next.
I think it's entirely fair to have the businesses pay when they come to town. And it's not being done enough right now. Williamson Inc. is trying to look for about 125% growth. And that's crippling our roads and our infrastructure. And I think it's fair for business to pay for that.
Thank you, Christopher. We're going to go to Tom Tonnercliff.
You've hit a hotspot for me. Thank you. Our residents pay quite a bit in impact fees and fees on their homes. They pay an adequate facilities tax that they're allowed to charge in the cities. And they keep those funds in the cities. The county also has the ability to charge this impact fee on new construction. Adequate facilities tax is what it's called. It's a one-time fee at the time of construction. Currently, the county charges it only in the unincorporated areas at 34 cents. We have the ability to move that to $2 a square foot for a one-time fee for new construction of non-residential buildings. That's one thing I want us to look a lot closer at this next year on the commission. We estimate it'll raise anywhere from $4 million to $10 million a year.
Thank you, Tom. And we're going to go back to Mr. Brian Clifford.
I think in my base, I don't think that growth should fall on existing citizens or increase taxes to pay for that growth. I think growth should pay for growth. And I think there are some creative ways that perhaps Tom just mentioned that we should look at. And perhaps there's other creative ways where new growth can help fund the impact it's having on our community. Our existing citizens shouldn't shoulder that growth. Some of those folks won't benefit from a new corporation coming in town. So looking at ways where those corporations or other growth activities can pay for themselves or contribute more is something I think we really need to look at going forward.
Thank you, Brian. We'll go to John Dillon next.
Thank you. Yes. I think the answer to this, in my opinion, is cut and dry. Never put the burden of growth on the citizens that are already living in the county. It's almost as if somebody comes into your house or your bubble, you shouldn't have to pay for the burden of them coming in. So the answer is the businesses would foot the bill whenever comes to infrastructure improvements in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. We'll go to Steve Smith next.
The growth that we've had in terms of companies coming has primarily been in the city, but they have an impact that overflows into the county as well. As Tom mentioned, there's some things we can look at in terms of county infrastructure where they could help. But we have to remember that those companies coming in and the people they employ have a real bearing on the tax base of the county. And non-residential businesses are appraised at 40% versus 25% for residential. So they're providing an awful lot of tax base for the county.
Thank you, Steve. And we'll go next to Ms. Jennifer Swaim.
I believe that the companies should definitely be more in charge of bringing in the money for improving the infrastructure. I don't think it should fall on the citizens at all. It's not fair to them. They've been here. Why should we punish them for bringing in new business?
Thank you, Jennifer. And we're going to move back over to Mr. Drell Floyd.
Yes, I agree that the budget, I mean, the tax increases should fall on the businesses. Businesses moving to this county because, you know, we do have some of the best school systems and some of the low tax rates. So I think they should have most of the burden of the business taxes. And the business that are moving in here, I believe that we need to have more business that's going to help the citizens, hire more of our citizens in the county versus moving other people. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Drell.
I thought my microphone cut off. Sorry.
That's okay. I'm not going to do you that way. I promise. Ms. Judy?
Okay, as a commissioner, I've always voted against tax incentives for companies moving in. I didn't feel like that was necessary. And we have discussed before, the businesses, you know, they don't supply, companies just don't supply jobs to this county. They supply jobs to counties all around us. And in my area, I see a lot of people from other counties coming through our county, using our roads. And it creates a lot of traffic and burden. So we have discussed before if there could be some type of fee to companies to help offset some of those road improvements that we do need in this county.
Thank you, Judy. We'll go to Betsy Hester next.
Thank you. Growth is quite an issue. And I did vote for an education impact fee to help pay for bricks and mortar for our schools. I have not voted for all businesses to get a fiscal break in coming to Williamson County. But I can tell you that we hold businesses' feet to the fire over education. They almost have to sign a pledge to help our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. And we'll move to Mr. Andy Moriarty.
You bet. Thanks, Richard. So Coleman, at a high level, I don't believe that the current businesses or the current residents should pay a burden for anyone or any company moving into town. That's first of all. Second of all, every company that's looking to relocate, they always ask for economic development incentives because many states simply hand them out. I don't see a need for those of us in Williamson County to hand out economic development incentives to lure new businesses into town unless there's something that you just can't say no to. You know, if there's an oracle coming with 1,000 jobs, building a new building, paying for the infrastructure, but they want a few things, then you need to be open to doing that. But generally speaking, it should fund itself, not the existing companies or residents.
Thank you, Mr. Moriarty. We're going to move to Mr. Tommy Little next.
Well, Tom mentioned one of the impact fee. When I was very first elected in 2006, we had a vote on that. My brother didn't speak to me for weeks because I made an amendment and almost got that impact fee imposed in the city's areas. Died 12 to 12. But I think that impact fee is a good start. Steve mentioned that also that businesses pay a higher appraised rate on their taxes. So they pay a higher property tax value for us. I think we need to look, when we did the traffic study, they gave us four different options to look at as far as raising funds for roads. And I think we need to look at those options. A couple of them require change on the state level. And I would like to push for us to really look into those because that's where we need to be headed in that direction.
Thank you, Tommy. We're going to move to Robyn next.
Okay, thank you so much. So being a planning commissioner, things that we do on the planning side, we look at developments when they come in. And we look at the infrastructure. We look at, not just approving the development itself, but we look at the roads, turning lanes, right turning lanes, double turning lanes. We look at the impact that it's going to have on our roads. And the developers, they comply with that. They know they have to do a lot of infrastructure as far as roads are concerned. Out in the unincorporated county, there's not a lot of huge businesses. You have Tractor Supply, you know, and a couple of different areas in the county. The major businesses typically move into the cities and municipalities because they do have infrastructure there. So do I feel like we should hold a large corporation coming into unincorporated to help with some of the infrastructure? Sure, absolutely. Just like we do developers. And so yes, I do.
Thank you, Robyn. Didn't mean to scare you with the white card. Ms. Mary, you're next.
So as I'm an employee of Nissan, I know that Nissan came here and that there was a partnership, you know, with the county on some of the infrastructure that was built. I do think that, you know, when companies are looking to come to Williamson County, they're coming here for a reason. They're coming here because we have lower property taxes. They're possibly, if they're coming from California, they know they'll probably be able to pay a lower wage to their employees. We have no income tax. So there's all kinds of incentives for them to bring people into the county. I think though, that absolutely we should partner with these companies and speak to them about the problems that we're facing right now with our infrastructure. And so that we can see how we can work together and start to solve some of these problems together. Their people are going to move here. We have a 2.2% unemployment rate. So we know they're going to be bringing people with them, okay? They're not going to be, you know, hiring from within. So I think it's going to be important that we partner with them and that we continue to make sure we have high-quality schools and we have good infrastructure.
Thank you, Mary. We'll go to Rob, last but not least, I promise.
Thank you. Tonight in New Orleansville, the town commission is voting on a Kroger development. We don't have Nissan North America, or Mitsubishi, or Schneider Electric in New Orleansville. Our commercial interests are in District 5 as well. Our mostly small and medium businesses. So it's important for us, whenever the county brings in large corporations from outside of the state or outside of the county, that they pay their share in both taxes and the infrastructure needs that they bring along with them. I would like to see the county work on how they can empower small and medium businesses to grow here because that's the lifeblood of our economy. But I think really what you're asking is more about impact fees and things like that and how they can fix our infrastructure. And the answer is yes, I do think that they should partner with the county and help with those things out.
Thank you, Rob. And I believe we are going back to Mr. Tom Lawrence.
If you're an incumbent, would you please explain why you voted to buy land for $40,000 an acre and happen to have a Renaissance festival on it? If you're not an incumbent, can you please explain why you would have voted the same way or why you would have voted against it?
We're going to go first with Brian Clifford on that from District 12.
All right. Sorry, I had to do a mic check since I have to switch down here. I think a legitimate function of government is acquiring land to preserve and protect it if it has natural, cultural, or historic value to a community. The National Park Service does it with national parks. State Parks does it with state parks. Local parks have a role there too. So I think what the commission did here, purchasing the land, falls into that legitimate government function of preserving land for the benefit and enjoyment of the citizens of the county. The other issue, I think, is operating the festival. That's less clear whether that's a legitimate government function, but right now, it provides revenue. We got it essentially at no cost. It came with the land and the land was at a great deal, if you look at the pricing. So maybe that's a discussion we continue to have. But for now, it's a revenue generating source for the county. And I think purchasing the land through Parks and Recreation was a legitimate function of government.
Thank you, Brian. We'll pose the same question as Mr. John Dillon.
Thank you. I would have voted for it because, like Brian said, it is a positive revenue generation. It doesn't have any direct effect on the residents in the county. And it provides a great community approach to bringing residents together for activities and preservation, as well as the land to not be developed in more of an egregious method for other corporations alongside that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. We'll go to Steve Smith next.
I absolutely voted to go through with the land purchase. Along with it, we got the festival as a donation. The Freeman family has run the festival for 30-something years. It has a history of making over a million dollars per year. They did not want their land to be developed into a subdivision. And so they approached the county several years ago and asked if we would partner with them on some sort of transition to preserve the land and preserve the festival. The Parks and Rec Department brings in revenue already in facilities, rentals, memberships, that sort of thing. So the idea that bringing in something else that generates more revenue with the Parks Department is a problem. That's not an issue.
Thank you, Steve. And we'll go to Ms. Jennifer Swaim next.
I absolutely would have voted to buy the land. I know the festival is a huge community event. And I've even taken my own children there. So I think that it was a very smart decision bringing it on because, you know, Williamson County is all about the family. And that's what that event is. It's all about family.
Thank you, Jennifer. We're going to go back over here to District 2. We'll start with Mr. Drell Floyd again.
Well, without having all the facts about the land purchase, I don't know how I would have voted on it. But as a citizen, looking in at it, I would probably say, why do we need it? But it is a family venue. But I've worked there, being a sheriff's deputy for many years. And if it's not my, if I'm understanding right, you can't have alcohol on county property. And that's one of the big functions at that place is people eating turkey legs and drinking beer. So I don't know how much of money that you may lose by having people not wanting to come out there because they can't do that anymore. So, but I don't know. I may would have So, but I don't know. I may would have voted yes. I may would have voted no. But again, I got to have more facts.
Thank you, Drell. Judy Lynch Herbert.
Okay, Richard. When I walked into the meeting to vote on this, I thought, there's no way I'm going to approve this. We don't need to be in this business. But then when I heard the numbers, I was like, I am all for it. Just to give you a little bit, we paid like 2.7 million, which is only 40,000 an acre, which was very generous of the Freemans because they also donated the festival business that's worth like $3.6 million. The net income off of this festival is $1.3 million each year. That's the net. So it will be paid off by its own income within five years. So then it will generate money for the county where we don't have, that'll lessen our tax burden. And also, it can be used as a park and other events. So I was convinced this was a good thing financially. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. We'll move to Betsy Hester next.
Thank you, sir. When I first heard about us purchasing the Renaissance Festival, I had many, many questions about it. Why are we doing it? Why now? Is that the kind of business we want to be in? And the Budget Committee, Property Committee did an excellent job of answering my questions on this. Renaissance Festival does make money, and we, they're just not making any more land these days for us, and we need to consider the land. So I voted yes.
Thank you, Betsy. We're going to move to Andy Moriarty.
You bet. Thanks, Richard. So as a conservative Republican, the first question I ask myself about something like that is, what's the function of county government? And my understanding of the function of county government is the government is to provide for the people services and things that they can't, that they, one, need and, two, can't practically provide for themselves. Law enforcement is probably at the top of that list. So this does not pass that test whatsoever. I would have to say, if you want to buy the land, buy the land and put it in a land bank, but have some local hospitality entrepreneur run the event. Don't compete with the hospitality industry by running your own events. It's just not the function of county government.
Thank you, Andy. We're going to step down to Mr. Tommy Little.
There was a little bit more to it than just buying that land. The county has also purchased and is building an emergency station, ambulance and fire station in downtown Triune. Beside that ambulance station and fire station is a horse-riding rink that they use. It's a park that's used every Friday night. And so sirens and ambulances don't always get along, and horses don't get along. So that was one of the considerations that went in. Yes, I voted in favor of this. It's in my backyard. I can see it from my front porch. It was a good land deal. It's used four weekends a month now. The county's putting together a master plan that will develop it as a park, that it'll be used, be able to be used 365 days a year, not just four weekends a month. I think it's a good deal for the county, and I did support it.
Thank you, Tommy. We're going to move to Robin Baltry.
Thank you so much. I concur with what Tommy's saying. I actually had a meeting with the Parks and Rec Director on Tuesday, and we talked about the land. Being in real estate, $40,000 an acre in this current market is an amazing deal. To have a park on the east side of the county that when the Triune Riding Club will be able to move over there, and they can be there 24 hours a day and not have to worry about the ambulances, as Tommy was talking about, because they're putting in a new fire station and the sirens, I thought it was a great idea. So once the festival's done, which will pay for itself, which we've all heard this, we'll have ballparks, which we need those. We'll have the Triune Riding Club will be over there. We'll have trails and whatever else Parks and Rec would like to do there. I think it's a great opportunity to have land to service College Grove, Triune, Arrington, and Nolansville and parts of Williamson County. I think, I thought it was a great, great purchase for the county, and I would have voted yes on it.
Thank you, Robin. Mary Smith next.
Well, when I think about purchases like this, especially when we don't have the money to pay for them, the first thing that comes to my mind is priorities. And so when I look at the priorities over our county, and when we have a fire chief who has to raise $80,000 a year just to cover his operating expenses, I'm just wondering where our priorities are. So I understand it's a good deal, and I can understand that we do want to conserve our land. I'm all for that. But I think we could have found a different possibility to sell that land to someone else that did want to operate a festival. This just wouldn't have fallen to my priorities for where we're at with this county right now. So I would have voted no.
Thank you, Mary. Rob Varell.
Sure, thanks. I'll start by saying that I don't have a problem with the county purchasing land. I really don't. And this is probably most important for the four of us because this falls in our district, as Chairman Little said. I don't have a problem with the county purchasing land or investing in land or preserving land. That's fine. Running a festival, it's kind of a different story. When I first talked to people in Nolansville about this, I asked them, would you rather the county invest in the Renaissance Festival, or would you rather them invest in our facilities in Nolansville, our undersized rec center or Nolansville Park, which hardly has any kind of playground equipment of any kind? There's stuff there, but it's not a lot. Or our ball fields, which are, we don't have enough ball fields for our kids to play sports at. You know, they would rather see investment in Nolansville. So I don't have a problem with buying land, but I would have rather seen the money invested in Nolansville instead, at least for that juncture. So not as it was presented initially.
Thank you, Rob. We're going to move back over here to District Seven. We'll start with Mr. Tom Tonichliff.
On Property Committee with Judy Herbert, when this came up, and Judy's right, she did say, oh, no, this isn't going to happen. And I was right there with her. After hearing the discussion and presentation on it, thought long and hard about, do we have the money to spend on this right now? Is this the right thing to do? Then you look at it, and you think, it's kind of hard to turn down 40,000 an acre. A lot of contiguous land that can be used for Parks and Rec in the future, more soccer fields, a horse rink, whatever it needs to be. County parks are a major part of the draw for Williamson County. They don't get enough play. They are a big draw for our county. So yes, I supported it and would do it again tomorrow if it voted, if we voted no tomorrow.
Thank you, Tom. Go to Christopher Richards next.
Thank you, Richard. A great question. I'd be a hard no. I'm a conservative Republican. That's not part of our purview. We talked about earlier in the questions about what is the job of the county commission, schools, roads, public, public safety. Buying parks is not part of that. And I know we do have some parks, but we're a billion dollars in debt. We can't afford it. We just cannot afford to be getting distracted with these little shiny objects. I would have said no. We could have used that $3 million to, I hate to sound like a broken record, but I'm like, I would have used that $3 million to partially fund the New Brentwood Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Last but not least, Mr. Burke.
At last. Absolutely, we voted for it. And there are a number of us that had done business with the Freeman family previously. And this has just turned out to be virtually a goldmine. It was very, we are in the, we are in the parks business. We are in the entertainment business from that standpoint. We have to do this. We don't, we're not just talking about schools. We're talking about a whole gamut of the county business. Yes, it was. Initially, when it came up, my initial thought was, no, we can't do this. After they presented the figures, they presented all the information, go.
Thank you, Burton. I believe that's made the rounds on that question. So we're going to stop back to Mr. Coleman.
Thank you. So if elected, how will you balance district-specific priorities with county needs as a whole? For you, does one come first?
We're going to start this time back over here with District Two. We're going to start with Andy Moriarty.
Great. Thanks, Richard. So Coleman, if I hear you, you're saying, how does somebody balance, you know, what's the role of a district commissioner? So I've got to say, there's a reason that there's two commissioners for each district, and that's so they get fair representation. You know, it's not like you're going to go into it being blindfolded and saying, I'm District Two, I don't care what goes on in Brentwood, because you have also overlapping responsibilities for the entire county. So to answer the question specifically, you have to do both. And I think, let's face it, in our lives, we all balance multiple things. You have to do two things at one time, or you have to do one thing, but you have to think about the ramifications on something else. So if we spend all of the resources in one or two districts, it'll hurt the other districts. We cannot allow ourselves to do that. So that's my rationale, Coleman.
Thank you, Andy. We'll move over to Ms. Betsy Hester.
Thank you. In District Two, we have individuals who live in the city of Franklin. We also represent individuals in the town of Thompson Station and in the city of Spring Hill. So I have always considered myself to represent everyone in the county in all 12 districts and decisions that I do make. Of course, I naturally concentrate on District Two. I have been to many, many meetings in the city of Franklin, Thompson Station, and Spring Hill to listen and learn and ask questions. And sometimes I complain. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Betsy. Judy Lynch Herbert.
All right. Even though I represent the second district, you know, I care about the whole county. You know, when we vote on these issues, we don't think just what we're doing for our area. We want the whole county to be good. And so we support all the different districts in the county. So I don't see that as an issue that, you know, that that's been, that we feel like one district does without while the other gets more. I think we all, all the commissioners work well together, and we try to be fair with each other so that each part of the county gets what they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Judy. Mr. Drell Floyd.
So District Two is probably one of the only districts that has a non-municipality. So we need county commissioners that's going to stand up for those people out in that district, like College Grove. We need a voice at the table. We have, I like to see College Grove because that's where I went to school at, to come like a leopards' fort, make a tourist town. And so we all, the funds that's coming into the county, and I don't think it's being pushed from one district to the another because they all bleed together. So if traffic is bad in Franklin, it's going to be bad in Spring Hill or College Grove or wherever you have it at. But sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Drell. Remember, the white one still gives you 10 seconds. You can cram a lot in 10 seconds. All right, we're going to go to Mr. Rob Varell from District Five.
Sure thing. So when you work on a legislative body, it's about collaboration. You want to be able to work with the people who are there, and they have their needs, and your district has their own. You're responsible for listening to your constituents throughout your entire district. I mean, I know that I've mentioned that I'm from Nolansville, but I would be representing the people of Arrington and Triune and parts of College Grove and all the way at Arno and Page High School. So you have to listen to all those folks, their needs and concerns, and collaborate with the other commissioners in the other districts, and come together to find a solution to your problems. That's what being an elected official is about. It's about listening, collaborating, and coming up with solutions to issues.
Thank you, Rob. Mary Smith.
When I think about, you know, districts, you know, which district you're in, I think that there's, you know, everyone wants what's best for their district, okay? But when you look at the entire county, again, you have priorities. So one district may need something, they need, they have a dire need. So you have to, again, prioritize. You have to look and see, you know, which district, what the different needs are, what the needs are for your district. And as the representative, keep bringing those needs forward, okay? You create an item and a list of things that need to get done. But I think the most important thing you've got to do there is you have to listen to the other folks in the room. You have to represent your district, and you have to negotiate. You have to negotiate and come up with a plan so that everyone feels like they're being heard, that they're being represented. Their problems are being acknowledged, and there's a plan to address them.
Thank you, Mary. Robin Baltry.
Thank you. Being on the Planning Commission, we represent the whole entire county. Anything that's going on, all the way over on Sneed Road, down to Fairview, down to College Grove, down to our area in District Five, all the way up into Brentwood, we look at, we look at everything in unincorporated Williamson County. So I feel like as a planning commissioner, I've been serving our county as an appointed position, of course. So I feel like I have that advantage over, over just looking at my district only. So when, sitting on the Planning Commission, we get, I mean, we get county commissioners in all the time when they're representing their district. And I love that. I love the fact that they represent their residents in their particular district. And I'll see county commissioners in the Planning Commission also that are, that are there to support as well. So I feel like I definitely already do that, and I'll do it more in District Five as well, looking at mine. But I feel like I already do that, looking at the county. And having a municipality in our district as large as Nolansville, we do have to collaborate, you know, with the municipality and others in the county as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Tommy Little.
I've been on the commission now for 16 years. We probably average 25 resolutions a month. And I cannot think of a single time when I've had to pit the needs of my district over the needs of the county. It just doesn't usually happen where you have to. I am elected to represent the fifth district. I will always represent the fifth district. But I just haven't seen the instance where the priorities or the vote for the best for the county was not also the best for that district.
Thank you, Tommy. We're going to move back over here to District Seven. We'll start with Mr. Burke Shalfon.
I think we're faced frequently with, with the choice, or not the choice, but the decision to determine, is this best for us or where it's best for the whole county? And you're a county commissioner. You're not only from Nolansville or only from Fairview. You have to take this all into consideration. I think tax, tax burdens from time to time really hit me in the head. When we talk about, well, the tax base that comes out of Brentwood, obviously, the real estate values there yield a great deal of tax, more than the rest of the, than many of the other areas in the county. You have to take it into consideration.
Thank you, Burke. Christopher Richards next.
Well, thank you for asking the question. It's another good question, because I've actually struggled with it myself. I think if I'm being honest, I would say that first and foremost, it would be the people in District Seven that I would represent first. We have, you know, Brentwood has some unique situations, and I think all the districts have unique situations. We have our own police department, our own fire department, where the county needs in some of the unincorporated areas, the Sheriff's Department and their own fire department. Of course, I'm not going to look at that in a bubble and not understand that somebody out in District One or District Two might need some funding for the Sheriff's Department or a new fire station. But I think my first priority would be to the voters in District Seven.
Thank you, Christopher. Tom Tonichliff.
You're elected as a county commissioner first. I always have Brentwood on my mind when I'm thinking about county business. For example, seven years ago, I was laser-focused on Brentwood when we were forced to look at zoning, rezoning for schools because we couldn't afford to build the STEM building. I fought, started a new group called Fund Our Schools, continued. That's what started my passion to rebuild Brentwood Middle School. It's a reason why Brentwood Middle School is still on the five-year plan so that it is going to be fully funded. I'm excited to be able to say that happened, but at the same time, it didn't come at a cost to any other community in the county.
Thank you, Tom. We're going next to Ms. Jennifer Swaim.
Sorry. My title is county commissioner. So overall, even though I am elected for District 12, I would have to consider the overall picture, even though I'm thinking about my district specifically. But I'd have to look at the overall picture and make sure that I'm not hurting someone else's district while I'm trying to improve mine.
Thank you, Jennifer. We'll move to Mr. Steve Smith.
Thank you, Richard. I've lived in the heart of the 12th District ever since I moved to Franklin in 1987. At one time, the 12th District was fully inside the city limits. People didn't even know they had a county commissioner. So it's now grown into So it's now grown into a more rural area to the east and more unincorporated. I think of it in part as you represent your district by being a connection to the county commission for them. If they have issues in the county related to county services, you're their connection. But I think overall, as a county commissioner, I agree with Tommy. Really, almost everything we do is about the county as a whole.
Thank you, Steve. We'll move to John Dillon.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. You know, our founding fathers created our government based on the separation of powers. We have two commissioners in the county per district. And the way I see it, my name isn't John Dillon. If I'm elected, my name is my neighbor, everybody in my community, my constituents, the voice of the people who are represented in the commission as a commissioner. Two people, two different ways of doing things, two different sets of ideas, two different people to come to. If one person's not available, that's the proper representation, that's the proper separation of powers, that's the proper representation to the people. That's my idea of having that type of representation and that type of government within the county.
Thank you, John, and we'll finish up with Mr. Brian Clifford.
All right. I think my microphone's working now. Thank you, Cheryl. I will approach this job with all of Williamson County at heart. Governor Lee tapped me to lead rural development, and one saying that has stuck with me that he gave me before we went out was, "We are only as rich as our poorest neighbors." So anything we do to the detriment of our closest neighbors, like our neighboring districts, are only going to be to the detriment of ourselves. So I think we have to approach it in a holistic view. But I also understand that I'm elected to advocate and represent District 12, so I will bring their concerns and their issues to this wonderful arrangement of other districts to talk about what might be best for our community. I'm a recovering attorney, so advocacy's in my blood, and those are things that I want to do for our district, and if they have concerns, I want to bring those to this group. But at the heart, I'm going to represent Williamson County as a whole.
Thank you, Brian, and that takes us back around to Mr. Tom Lawrence.
We're going to get a little personal here, if that's all right. I've been able to interview most of you on the radio recently, and if I haven't gotten to you yet, it's not too late. And Budget Commission Chairman Smith, check out my math, if you would, please. We're a billion in debt, right? So that means I owe somebody $4,000. Mayor just said that we're 250,000 people. 250,000 into a billion is $4,000. Sounds like a lot of money.
Yeah.
Marsha Blackburn tells me that I owe the U.S. government $35,000 as the share, my share of the debt. It's a lot for an old man. It seems, sounds like a statement. I'm getting to the question. It seems like it's a shame that a school teacher, sheriff's deputy, the guy that cuts the grass at the park can't live with the people he or she serves. Your question, and it's not going to take, it's not going to take a minute to answer. If you want to take a minute to answer, it's fine. Do you own your house? Can you afford to buy it today?
Well, Rob, don't shoot me, but we're going to start with Rob Farrell from District Five.
No, that's fine. So, do I own my house? Almost. Really close, really close. 15-year mortgage in 2013, so we're close.
Bless your heart.
Could, if I could, could I buy it today? Maybe. Not as a first-time home buyer, probably not. If I could, I want to try and tackle this debt thing. I've got a great analogy for you. We're a billion in debt, and we bring in $650 million a year, and our payments on that is $30 million every year. Well, what if you cut out four zeros from all of that, okay? If you made $65,000 a year and your mortgage was $100,000 and your payments were $3,000 every year, not monthly, would you pay that? That'd be $250 a month. I would say that's a pretty good deal. Would you take that, Tom?
Probably would.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rob. We'll move to Mary Smith next.
Well, no, I do not own my home. If I had to purchase my home today, could I afford it? I have amazing credit, so the answer is yes, I could afford my home today. However, I would not purchase my home because I have other expenses. So I think when we look at the debt, when I look at my own kitchen table economics, there's responsible spending before I want to start looking at responsible borrowing. So yes, I could afford my home, but I could probably afford an even bigger home. Doesn't mean I'm going to purchase it. So I think we have to think about the other things going on, you know, in our budget to make sure that we're properly financing those and giving adequate focus to the things we need to pay for. That's my answer.
Thank you, Mary. We'll move over to Robin Baldry.
Thank you. I do own my home, and if I purchased it today, I more than likely could afford it. Not in cash, I would have to get a loan. My husband and I have been married 31 years, and every house that we buy, we typically turn around and make money off of it, which is great, but we also have really great credit. And being in the real estate industry, people who have really good credit get really good rates. So yes, I do own my home and more than likely could afford it today by financing it, yes, with a large down payment.
Tommy Little.
Still paying for it. Yes, I think I probably could refinance and purchase it if I had to. Getting ready, I'm 65, so will be retiring shortly. That might have made a difference, whether I could or not. When you talk about county debt, I keep hearing the billion dollars batted around, and there's two different numbers there. Yes, we have a billion dollars in debt, but the county's only responsible for about 700, 850,000 of it because the other is self-supporting, which means the entity that's borrowed the money under the county's name is paying that debt. So we don't pay all of it. And, you know, that does make a little bit of a difference, but Rob had a great valuation that really puts the debt in perspective. It's a good perspective.
Thank you, Tommy. We're going to move over to District Seven, and we'll start with Tom Tonichliff.
Thank you. I need to start by saying I left someone off on my Fund Our Schools comment. I co-founded that with a young lady in Brentwood, and I left her off, and that wasn't fair. Tom, your question started around employees not being able to live in the county where we live. 3,200 teachers, 900 live out of county, 35% roughly, and there, my math isn't great without my calculator on my phone. I think that's pretty good based on what we're doing. Could it be better? Absolutely. But our property values in Williamson County are ridiculously high, very high. So I talk to people around District Seven a lot, folks that work at the grocery store or work at any business I walk into. Do they live in Brentwood? No. They live in Williamson County? Nope. They live somewhere else. So it's not just our employees, but I would like to address that.
Thank you, Tom. We'll move to Christopher Richards.
Tom, you and I had a conversation about this, and I think you recall. I'm very proud to be debt-free. I could afford my, I don't want to brag, but I could afford it several times over because I'm debt-free. That is the beauty of being debt-free. I follow Dave Ramsey's advice, and I pay cash for everything, and that's one of the big reasons why I'm running for the county commission. You are afforded a lot more flexibility when you have money in the bank.
Thank you, Christopher. We'll move to Mr. Bert Chalfont.
I owned my house 40 years. Would I buy it at its current estimated value? It is appreciated that much.
Thank you, Bert. And we're going to move to Ms. Jennifer Swain, District 12, sorry.
Unlike most of the people here, I actually live in an apartment, and I am debt-free. The reason for that is because I want to remain debt-free. So could I afford a home with my credit? Absolutely. But am I going to right at the moment, like Ms. Mary said? No, because I have other priorities that I need to take care of and maintain first.
Thank you, Jennifer. We're going to move to Steve Smith next.
Thank you, Richard. Tom, you didn't hit me with this question on the radio. I kept expecting it, but no, I'm still paying for my house. And could I buy it now? No. The problem is, that's not just Williamson County, it's all over the country. And I like Rob's point, talking about the debt of the county. I look at it another way. If you have a $650,000 house in Williamson County, the debt would represent about a $10,000 mortgage on that $650,000 house. The issue that we have to deal with, and I'm looking forward to continuing that the next four years if I'm elected, is getting the salaries of our teachers, our sheriff's deputies, our parks employees up.
Thank you, Steve. We're going to move to John Dillon.
Do I own my house? Yes. Can I afford it now? Yes. Is that the big picture? No, it's not. There's a much more bigger picture within the county that needs to be addressed as a whole and not just one smaller vision within the county. Like Mr. Smith was speaking of, public service is a very important role within the county to keep the county safe, to keep the county preserved, and to keep the county growing in the way that it is today. So I would definitely take a more bigger picture and bigger perspective into the debt and into what's going on around the county to make sure the decisions within the budget are being addressed for the best interests of the county.
Thank you, John. Move to Brian Clifford.
Yeah, we have a house, we have a mortgage on it. I think even some of the wealthiest folks in the country still mortgage their houses with interest rates that make sense, and of course, I appreciate the investment that debt provides in a family like ours that's growing and the investment that debt can provide in other places. When I look at our debt and I think about where we are, and thank you to the county for summing it up really well the past couple of weeks, is I think we're in a better financial position than we were 20 years ago, considering our tax base and our debt ratio. But we still have to keep an eye on our debt. We have to make sure that we don't overuse our bond rating and spend unnecessarily. I think that's an opportunity for us because we can borrow cheaply, and we can do some things that we might not otherwise be able to do if we couldn't borrow cheaply. But to the second point of the question, being able to afford where we live, I think we really have to focus on better pay for some of our most essential workers, like our teachers, our police officers, our firefighters. Dusty Rhodes is here tonight. I know he wants nothing more than better pay for his folks, and I'm proud to have his endorsement, and I'm going to do that for him if I can.
Thank you, Brian. We're going to move over to District Two, and we're going to start with Andy Moriarty.
Thanks, Richard. So yes, we own our home, we're debt-free, we're fans of the Ramsey Solutions, just like Chris is. And yes, we could afford to buy our home today, which is a good thing. But I'll tell you, this feels a little surreal here. Never before have I heard so many elected officials talk about how a billion dollars is really not a lot of money. I don't know. I think in my time today, a billion dollars is, in fact, a lot of money. The analogy I would use with our county debt, and by the way, we have the second highest county debt in the state of Tennessee, so that's not a good thing. But the analogy I would use is the county government has a billion-dollar mortgage on $65 billion worth of homes it does not own. When we keep talking about our bond rating, a big reason, the devil's in the detail. Big reason the bond rating is so high is because of the wealth of the people that live here, not the financial decisions made by the county.
Thank you, Andy. We'll move to Betsy Hester.
Thank you. I do own my home. Could I buy it today? I'd have to take a deep breath and sell some assets. Our county debt is not a billion dollars. From the mayor's office, we should end the 2022 fiscal year with approximately $935,440,000. That's a difference of $65 million. That's enough to build a new high school. That's a lot of money, and it is in error to call it a billion dollars' worth of debt. That's how close we watch it. We do enjoy our AAA bond rating. We have to build schools, and part of our debt is in revenue-generating facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. We're going to move to Ms. Judy.
All right. I do own my own home. I think what bothers me, and I see it happen as I've grown up here, is a lot of my friends, you know, own their homes, but their children can't afford to live here. And so their kids have to move to other counties, and that is what's a real shame, and that does bother me. But I'm going to be like Betsy. I'm going to clarify the debt. I've got some numbers. Our debt as of 12/31/21 was $974 million. 145 million of that is owned by the hospital that borrowed it under our AAA rating, so they pay that back. We never have had to pay for them. They pay it themselves totally. So really, all the county owes is $828 million. And the thing is, great, we could not have debt if we wanted to, but that means no new schools, and I don't know if people want to have 30 portables beside the schools or what, but most of our debt's schools, and we have to build those schools. Thank you.
Drell Floyd, I believe you've got the last say on this.
Yes, and thank you for that question, Tom. So I am one of those law enforcement officers who work for the county who do live in this county, but unfortunately, a lot of my coworkers does not. No, I do not own my home, but could I afford my home? Yes, because I do have great credit. I started working in the sheriff's office 22 years ago. I started out maybe like $12 an hour. Here it is 22 years later, and I'm not even at $30 an hour yet. So we do have an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Drell. And I'm going to look back to Sherri. Do we have time for another question? Okay. So we're at the portion for everybody to give a two-minute closing statement, and I'm trying to be fair and move around so not everybody gets to start or stop at the same time. And we're going to start off with Mr. Bert Chalfont. You have two minutes before you close the statement.
Well, I have volunteered practically my entire life. I have served over 30 years in the military. I have served over 25 years on the Board of Trustees of Williamson Medical Center. It is just a matter of, if I, I would have a great deal of difficulty doing something else. I have given, and I have given, and I have given, and I want nothing in return but to be returned to the Seventh District Commission seat.
Thank you, Bert. Christopher Richards.
Thank you. As I knock on doors around Brentwood, the residents are stunned to find that their beloved county is in debt. Many ask if the city is in debt. It is not. Brentwood lives debt-free, and the City Finance Department wins awards for their fiscal budgeting process. Based on a recent confirmation by the county mayor, Williamson County is approaching $1 billion in debt. No statistical graphs are going to explain that number away. It infuriates me that even at this point, the incumbent candidates are complacent about the debt and focus strictly on the AAA bond rating. At what point will they be concerned? With rising interest rates, uncertainty about inflation, it's clear to me we are just barely holding on to that beloved AAA bond rating. The situation is dire. The interest we pay every year on the debt is about $30 to $50 million. The interest payments alone for one year could pay for the badly needed, and again, I'm sorry, I'm a broken record, pay for the badly needed, long-awaited Brentwood Middle School replacement. If commissioners continue to be complacent and voters keep the status quo, we will shortly be facing $2 billion without even understanding how we got there. That lack of planning is leading to our kids being in portable classrooms behind Brentwood High School because we will not have enough room for our students. High School because we will not have enough room for our students. That lack of planning leads to the purchase of a Renaissance Festival for $3 million. That $3 million could have been put towards Brentwood Middle School. Every dollar the county spends comes from a hard-working taxpayer. It should never be taken from taxpayers and spent on Renaissance fairs to the tune of $3 million. That money won't end up in our gas tanks or food on the table. It won't go towards retirement or college tuition. It deserves to be protected and invested wisely to benefit our county. I will do that. We can go another billion dollars in debt where you can elect me to stop the irresponsible spending. Change the equation.
Thank you, Christopher. Tom Tonnycliff.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Tom and Coleman, for your questions this evening. I am proud to have served the last four years to District Seven in Brentwood. I look forward to hopefully serving another four years in District Seven. We talk a lot about the debt. It tends to come up every four years at election time in a big way. We are an extremely conservative county. We do extremely conservative accounting practices. Quick example, we budget on a 92% property tax return. We actually get a 99% property tax return. A penny right now is worth about $1.8 million in our tax, tax rate. We estimate it at 1.6 for our accounting purposes. Everything we do is conservative in our dollars. I don't know how we would have funded the growth we've dealt with in the last 20 years without some debt. We built a lot of schools and we've got more to build. So I, let's all address that. I would just like to say thank you to the constituents of District Seven for putting your faith in me the last four years and I hope I can count on your vote the next weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We're going to move to District 12. Brian Clifford goes.
Great, thank you. Williamson County is an amazing place. We have the best county in the state. Fiscally, quality of life, public safety, education, all the great things people want. And people are coming here in droves because they want some of what we have. Some people want to burn it down in the name of making it better. I think there's areas for improvement. I think we can improve a couple of things. There's always room for improvement. Um, I want to help us focus on education. That's one of our strengths. So keep focusing on education, appropriate funding for schools, better competitive teacher pay, and helping our school board be accountable to our parents and parental choice in education. Looking at growth and infrastructure, focusing on long-range growth plans so that we can afford the growth we're seeing and, but also that doesn't diminish the rural charm that we all love about Williamson County. And then also the public safety piece, working with our mayor and our sheriff to ensure that they are funded appropriately to where they can keep the citizens safe, to where we all sleep at night feeling good about living in Williamson County. My wife sometimes jokes that if my kids ever move away, we're going to follow them in an RV and park in their driveway wherever they go. So if you ask my long-term vision, it's to make this county so good they don't want to leave. That eight-year-old and five-year-old over there, I want them to stay here so when they grow up, they raise their family here so I don't have to move and we can live here together. So that's my ultimate vision here, that families want to grow up here, stay here and be in the best county in the state. I'll ask for your vote, uh, come May 3rd in our primary. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. We're going to move right over to Mr. John Dillon.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. As being a firefighter for 20 years, it just made me see everybody that I got to come in contact with. I understand it wasn't here in Williamson County, but ever since I started running for county commissioner, I got to knock on doors, meet a lot of phenomenal people, very friendly, very honest, just great people to talk to and it warmed my heart knowing that all these great people lived in the county. We are the greatest county in the state. We have a lot of great people. Everybody in this room is amazing. Everybody in the county commission is amazing. Everybody wants to do the best for this county, which is what makes us a great community. What I want to do if elected as county commissioner is continue what I've been doing for the last 20 years, which is all I know, is public service, being the voice of the people, vote to be heard and do everything I can to serve my constituents so they are served in a manner that does the best for them, whether it's public service, whether it's the fiscal budget, whether it's infrastructure, or everything as a whole as a community. And every time I talk to every single person that I've knocked on the doors with, they're very pleased to hear that that's exactly what I want to do and I'll continue to do that every day, elected or not. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We're going to move to Mr. Steve Smith.
Thank you, Richard. I'm running to preserve and improve the quality of life that we have here in Williamson County for all of our kids and grandkids. I have children and grand, and a grandchild here. Um, I believe that involves good budgeting, low taxes, low crime, good schools, uh, good parks and rec facilities. Um, that's, that's been a real balance over the last few years with the growth that we've had. It's put pressure on every department of the county. And I think on balance, we've done a pretty good job of that. We, as everybody has mentioned, we're the best county in Tennessee and I want to keep it that way.
Thank you, Steve. We're going to move to Jennifer Swain.
Um, like everybody before me said, Williamson County is an amazing place to raise a family. I have, I'm a single mom of four kids and I want them to all grow up and be able to live in this county and enjoy it. I've been a public servant since I was 18 years old. Um, and I don't know any other life. I'm a nurse now, so I still take care of people every single day. And I really think that with all my background, that I could really bring an asset to the commission and help make this community in this county a place where even my children never, ever want to walk away from.
Thank you, Jennifer. We're going to move over to District Two. We'll start with Mr. Drell Floyd.
Thank you. So I would like to just thank Cheryl, Sherry, Debbie, Tom and Coleman. Thank you guys for putting this on for us. I'm running for county commission District Two. His, I'm no politician. I'm just a country boy from College Grove, born and raised here and trying to help my constituents out in District Two. I worked for the sheriff's office for the last 22 years. I've dedicated time, volunteered time. I was an explorer back when I was 16 at the sheriff's office also. So if you count that time, I've been hanging out the sheriff's office about 26 years. Um, I want to continue to serve. That's what I do. I'm a servant. Some of your best, your best leaders are servants. And, um, I'd just like for your vote. I pledge to put family, community first. I'm a strong leader, transparent. And I want my daughters and kids to grow up in a county that I grew up in and love. Uh, thank you, Betsy, Judy, for your years of service. I just want, I just want to be given that opportunity like they've had their opportunity for 16 years in 12 years. And, um, thank you.
Thank you, Drell. We'll go with Ms. Judy Lynch Herbert.
All right. Well, I'm just a country gal from Flat Creek. But I want to say to the residents, the Second District, I would appreciate your vote. And as the generations of my family before me, I love this county and I'll be spending the rest of my life here. So when I vote on resolutions, I vote for not how it's just going to affect the next year, but how it's going to affect for years to come because I want this place to continue to be a great place to live in, raise a family and grow old in. So I thank you so much, Richard and ladies. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Judy. Ms. Betsy Hester.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, I don't, the light's not on, but okay.
It's on. You got you.
I, I have proudly served for 16 years on the county commission. Uh, I recently voted for small races for teachers and our sheriff's deputies and our emergency personnel. I, I would continue, I'd like to continue to do that. I serve also on the Stormwater Appeals Board now. I'd like to continue with that. I want to continue working for better broadband connection, connectivity for, uh, all of the county, but especially some of our folks in the Second District. I fought for and voted for 20 new schools in 16 years. I have also voted for renovations to at least six new schools. Uh, the state of Tennessee mandates that we build schools. And I think we've done a very good job. I also have spoken with Dr. Jason, uh, with Dr. Golden this Monday during our, after our educational meeting, our for the budget, and I asked him, please, could we look into not charging tuition for our teachers who must live out of county and who do bring their own children to school in, uh, in Williamson County? I have also served on the Greater Nashville Area Commission on Aging and Disabilities and though our aging possibility, population and dis, disabled population have my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Betsy. We'll move to Mr. Andy Moriarty.
Great, thanks, Richard. Um, I believe our county's lost its way just a little bit, but I think we can get it back on track fairly easily. In my view, the purpose of a county government is to provide for the people what they can't practically provide for themselves. No more and no less. Williamson County is the 10th, is the wealthiest county in Tennessee and the 10th wealthiest county in the United States. We can be debt-free and spending only what we have to spend each year. In each of the last 10 years, we've simply spent more than we've taken in and borrowed the difference. Our teachers are some of the lowest paid in the state with 80% of counties paying more to their teachers than we pay to our teachers. We seem to have the money to buy land and a festival, but we don't pay our teachers fairly. We have the money to buy speculative properties, but we don't have the money to pay our teachers fairly. We're now investing $200 million in a for-profit hospital that earns apples-to-apples one-fourth of what a business-owned HCA hospital earns. It's not because it's mismanaged, but because it's simply run by government. Government is not going to be as efficient as a, as a, an entity, a business entity is. That 20, $200 million in investment represents pretty close to 20 years of earnings for that proper, for that hospital. So yet we still don't pay our teachers fairly. I think we've lost our way a bit, but I think we can find ourselves again. And I think if you vote for the right people, we will find ourselves again. And thank you to the ladies that host of this, as well as our wonderful, uh, emcee. Richard, you did great. Boy, I think, and you said you'd make all these mistakes and you were like flawless.
I'm like a politician. I can just cover it right up.
You're just set, you're just set, setting the tone for us. You did a great job. Thank you, Tom and Coleman.
Thank you, Andy. We're going to go down to District Five and we'll start with Rob Farrell.
Farrell. Farrell. I did it right all night. I swear to God. See what you did to me? It's fine. No worries. It happens all the time. So Vice Chairman Smith and my friend, Mr. Brian Clifford, you were almost right. We don't live in the best county in the state. We live in the best county in the world. And I would love to serve as a county commissioner in District Five in order to maintain that vision and values that we also hold so dear. As a non-elected official, I feel like in the last four years, I have been an effective community volunteer. I've done a lot for Nolanville, I feel, and I feel that if I were in elected position, I would be even more effective. I stay plugged into things. I don't miss votes. I keep up with things and have relationships with people at the state, county and municipal level. I am the only one in this primary who is, who has the backing of Nolanville Municipal elected officials. Both Mayor Adams and Commissioner Guermoni are endorsing me. We have a lot of capital in these that are coming up in the next coming years. I know that in Nolanville alone, we're going to have an elementary school and we have to pay for that some way. It's 30 to 40 million dollars. I would rather borrow money to build that rather than have a massive tax increase and try and pay for most of it in cash. We also have the Triple J project that's coming up. It's important that we have a separate facility for our juvenile jail as well as our, uh, adult jail and, and also fund the, uh, the mental health aspect of, of that area too. I'd appreciate your vote if you live in District Five. I would love to represent you and I feel I would be an effective leader. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Ms. Mary Smith.
So, uh, my journey here began in November 2021. Okay. Good timing, huh? Um, when I was invited to a local coffee shop to learn more about our county government from a former county commissioner. That commissioner just happened to be my good friend, Kathy Danner. After listening to her explain the challenges we face in our county, I had just one question for her. How do we find and encourage strong conservative voices to run for office? Her answer was short and concise. Mary, you need to run. Those five words resonated me, but the thought of campaigning and self-promotion is just not who I am. But I also knew I was born to serve and this, if this is what God was calling me to, who was I to say no? Fast forward to today and now I know without a doubt what she was trying to get me to understand. So let me be clear, I'm not running because I want to. I'm running because I need to. I need to run for the teachers who are concerned that they can, they very soon can't afford their rent because it'll be more than they can afford. For the single moms and property owners who fear they will be forced to move because they can no longer afford their property taxes. For the families concerned about their grown children moving away because of a lack of affordable houses. Likewise, for the fire chief who is anxious about there being enough firefighters available to save a life or a home. For the commuters who spend endless time in traffic instead of spending quality time with their families. And for the parents who are worried about the children's safety and quality of education in our public schools. And these are just a few of the citizens I've talked to expressing very pressing and practical concerns that our elected leaders must address. Williamson County is a unique and special place, but we are at risk of losing our identity if we don't step up and make changes that prove to our families they will always be first. And I promise you, with every vote I cast or decision I make, I will think about your family as if it's my own. It may be my name on the ballot, but when you cast your vote for Mary Smith, you are casting it for the collective voices to be heard loud and clear. Just remember these three words, Smith for Fifth.
About, I got a loud voice. Ms. Robin Baldry.
Thank you so much. I concur with Rob. I think we have the greatest county in the world and I've loved living here for 21 years. I'm running to ensure that an experienced voice speaks for the communities of District Five. I will work to continue preserving our rural character, which is what brought us and so many others here. I will focus on the needs and ideas and input of all the people of the Fifth to provide the most responsive and effective representation possible in the areas of planning and long-range growth. And I will work to keep taxes low and our AAA bond. We have an amazing county and I love this county. Responsible growth and infrastructure are important as we continue to grow. I will work with Mayor Anderson and our state legislators to make sure our interests at the Capitol are not ignored because we are Williamson County. I support our local public schools, the crown jewels of Williamson County. I believe our children deserve the opportunity to receive the top-quality education. I will ensure that our schools get the resources necessary to maintain and improve on the level of excellence. I support higher teacher salary. I will work with the other commissioners and the school board to support ways we can responsibly attract and keep great teachers in Williamson County, including a solution to the teacher tuition. I will work to continue the success of the sheriff's department, our fire department and emergency agencies, and work to ensure that they have the resources and funds they need to keep and attract new deputies and protect our growing number of families and schools and businesses safe. I pledge to each of you is that when I make impactful decisions, I will do my homework, I will seek your input, and I will be transparent about how I make my decisions. I appreciate the endorsements of our mayor, Rogers Anderson, and my good friend Sheriff Dusty Rhodes. I'm asking for your vote to bring my experience, my sensible solutions and my hard work ethics to our county commission for District Five. Also wanted to say, thank Sherry and Debbie and Cheryl and you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Robin. And once again, last but not least, Tommy Little.
Tom Coleman, Harold and WKM, again, thank you for moderating and, and Richard for doing this. Thank you, ladies, for giving us this opportunity. Tom made me think back to my early days before I was, before I even had kids. Tom made me think back to my early days before I was, before I even had kids. I was talking to joining an organization called the Franklin JC's. The Franklin JC's had a creed that I, I didn't realize till tonight how much it has shaped my life, but the opening line of that creed is that faith in God gives meaning and purpose to human life. The last line says, "And service to humanity is the best work of life." And that's what I have spent a majority of my life doing, is in service. Service to my church, service to schools, service to this county, and I would like to continue to do that service. Do we do everything right? No, nobody does. But we do what we think is best for the county and the best for our constituents, and I would appreciate your vote to keep that going. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. And I believe that concludes, unless y'all have something else. Thank every one of y'all for being up there. I sincerely mean that. It is a really hard thing to do. Thank y'all. Thank you very much.